Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled city council meeting for May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. At this time, we'll start our meeting with by calling the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain or accept any motions to approve tonight's agenda, please.
Go move Sullivan.
Second Schleter.
And Councilmember Schleter, thank you for seconding that. I'll turn it over to, or any discussion? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to City Administrator Krugel for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Uh, Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozey.
Aye.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Kirby.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute thirteen D dash zero five subsection three B, a closed attorney-client privilege meeting for discussion for a pending legal matter involving and involved with an employment situation has been called and will be conducted at six thirty P M. on Monday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-one, virtually using our GO webinar. So at this time, I will entertain any motions to move on to that closed meeting.
Mayor Kirby, Councilperson Swanberg, motion to close the meeting.
Second Sullivan.
Swanberg, thank you for seconding that. Councilmember Sullivan, any other discussion? If not, I will ask City Administrator Krugel to take a role.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozey.
Aye.
Member Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Kirby.
Aye. So at this time, we'll move into the closed meeting and I'll give everybody a few minutes to get set. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody, to our May tenth regularly scheduled meeting. We will now move into the consent agenda. All items on the agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. Um, at this time, I'll ask our city administrator to uh, kind of review these consent agendas.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby. Um, agenda item five A are the city council meetings from April twenty-sixth. Uh, five B are the dispersment approvals through May tenth. Uh, only um, a couple of things to know. We had our, our interest payment for our twenty seventeen A debt service. So that's for the, the Second Street North project that we did in twenty seventeen. Um, that's, that's just the interest payment for this year. And then we had the, the purchase power of four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars and some change for um, our energy power that, that we, that we purchased through our electric utility. Uh, item five C, the La Sourd Baseball Association had, uh, is applying for their on-sale three point two liquor license. Uh, five D is a transfer to the community center fund. So this one is a transfer from our one oh one fund, which is our general fund to our, our six fifteen fund, which is our community center fund. And this is related to the COVID nineteen operations. Um, back in March, we closed down the facility and then um, we kind of made some projections as far as what we thought of the additional um, uh, regulations would, would cost us and what some of the, the revenue, um, things that we had going on with not having a, a facility open would be. We projected it to be about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is what we thought the, the transfer would be. It's actually just under one eighty-four. So um, kind of being in an unknown situation, it came out, I, I think maybe closer than what I expected it to, which is good. Um, so we have that transfer and that's, that goes into twenty twenty and that'll be part of our twenty twenty audit. Um, and what you'll see there when that audit is, is presented to city council in June is uh, the deficit on the community center will remain the same as it was at the end of twenty nineteen. So kind of what we, what we talked about throughout the pandemic as far as one of the goals. Um, one of the things that we, we also um, tried to accomplish and I, and I believe we did, was getting us back to above that forty percent fund balance policy. But uh, more will come on that when we, when we get the audit back uh, from the auditors. And then the last item five E, um, it's a bunch of different seasonal and part-time hires. So uh, lifeguards, um, and some of our seasonal employees that, that uh, work uh, in our uh, public works, uh, public services areas, water, electric and the streets. Um, and then also you'll see in there, um, uh, public works manager. So that position, uh, we're, we're recommending to hire Scott Schrader uh, from uh, well, he's currently employed in, in uh, Saint Peter, uh, but, but hiring him as the public works manager at seventy-nine thousand dollars a year. And then um, trying to remember Bob's Robert uh, Leavard, I believe. Um, him as the, the recreation maintenance supervisor and uh, at seventy-four thousand dollars a year. Um, both very good candidates. We had a tremendous applicant pool. Um, I was very happy with, with who we had apply for both of those positions. Um, and I, and, and Rich and, and his team had, uh, had their work cut out for them uh, to pick, pick some candidates for that. So I'm very happy with the, with the people that, that were proposed and, and we're recommending that we, we move forward with uh, with hiring those two full-time positions. Um, the public works manager would start, I believe, on June fourteenth. Um, and then the uh, recreation maintenance supervisor would then start uh, basically two weeks after, uh, after tonight if approved. So um, that's what I have on the consent agenda. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know.
I have no questions. Anybody else?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg. Second anybody?
Lozey saying.
Mr. Lozey and Ms. Mahoney, both. Um, any questions or comments? Other, otherwise we'll turn it over to Administrator Krugel for a vote.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Uh, Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozey.
Aye.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Kirby.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Moving on to public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Uh, consent will, comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting and identify themselves by providing their name and their address. This time, do we have anybody that would like to share anything with the council?
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Uh, we did have somebody sign up previously, but I, I did receive confirmation via email that they're gonna come to a, a future city council meeting. We do have three individuals in attendance, um, and I'm not seeing any of them raise their hands at the moment. Um, go ahead and give them a couple of seconds to raise their hand. Um, that'd be appropriate and then, and then we can move on. So I, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand at this moment, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on. Moving on to uh, item number seven A, Cassa twenty-two and Coventry Road opening. You want to give us the introductory to that, Administrator Krugel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of the city council. Uh, this is an item that, that we've talked about in the past, um, throughout uh, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty as part of the uh, county state aid highway twenty-two uh, project that, that's currently uh, uh, in its second year here in, in La Sourd. Um, one of the areas that, that we looked at was the opening of, of the intersection of, of Cassa twenty-two and Coventry Road. Uh, back in twenty twenty, we defined a process um, to open it. Um, and, and, and we're getting to that point where we're, we're following that schedule that we outlined um, uh, back in twenty twenty. We do have Corey Beanfang, the city engineer here, to go over that process and kind of um, some of the results, uh, you know, really what we're looking at is design, uh, design standards and then also what the, what the as-built conditions are. Where really one of the questions that, that we want to examine here before we open this up is, do the, do the as-built conditions uh, indicate that it was, it was built uh, as the design um, was designed, as the road design was designed? So um, Corey will, will get into that in more detail and I'll hand it off to him uh, to go over the project and the, the presentation. Um, as a note, both items tonight on the regular agenda are, are not action items. They're more of a, a informational, um, but there is a process with this that, that goes into next week, Monday, uh, public open house um, at the, the Coventry, um, Cassa twenty-two intersection. And then on the twenty-fourth, there will be a, a proposal for consideration of the, the draft resolution that was included in the packet um, for this meeting um, to, to consider adopting that resolution that formally opens that intersection. So I will, I'll, I'll kick it over to Corey to, to go through the presentation and, and we can both answer questions if there are any.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, thank you, Jasper. If you don't mind. So in regards to the Cassa twenty-two Coventry Road, um, as Jasper noted, you know, we've been um, looking at this here for a number of years, you know, almost four years now, really, from the start of the project conception. Um, the Cassa twenty-two Turnback Project Engineering and Design really started in summer of twenty seventeen. Um, and it was part of that process where, where it was acknowledgement that Coventry wasn't connected to, to Elmwood. Uh, maybe at the time didn't fully understand it, but I, it was, it was originally always a project goal to, to understand that better and, and make improvement if there was a possibility for it. Um, a couple of years after that, then we, we formally kicked off the four twenty-nine process, which was the, the improvement hearing. We just recently had that, um, that, the, the scheduling of that or the acceptance of feasibility report with thirty-six, acknowledging that first public hearing. Um, so that was, that was formally uh, held in Oc- uh, October of nineteen. And it was at that time that we did a pretty in-depth study of Coventry Road. Um, you know, presented some speed data, um, presented some, um, some considerations for improvements that we are gonna make to allow Coventry to be open, really acknowledging that proposed design. Um, and then what we're gonna capture tonight as, as confirming that we achieved that proposed design, but really going into the detail um, of what we were doing different to allow Coventry to be opened. Um, shortly thereafter then, we, we went through the formal review process with Mindot and the county to accept those plans, to accept that proposed design. Um, that was, that was done there in, in November of nineteen. And then really kicking out that final authorization to go up for bids. Um, and as Jasper noted, it was in early of twenty, uh, January of, January thirteen of twenty twenty, where we acknowledged um, this process that we're following here, almost, almost exactly as we communicated it over a year ago. Um, where we would, we would come back after the built condition, uh, verify that it was built per the, per the expectation design and then, and then obviously, you know, assess and, and move forward with the decision from there. Um, then in, in January, we received that, later in January, received that final approval, allowing us then to open bids in February. Um, we started construction in April. Um, and, and then uh, we're able to successfully complete all the improvements on, on Elmwood um, in Coventry with exception of the final wear course, understanding that we still need to place that final lift of the Batuminus, but um, everything else from a, from a roadway profile standpoint, curb and gutter, that was completed, allowing us then to do that as-built survey, which we, we, we communicated we were gonna do. Um, we were able to successfully complete that before the winter of, of last fall. If you don't mind, Jasper. So then that really brings us forward to tonight. One of the things that we communicated last year, um, in that twenty twenty, you know, timeline expectation for Coventry is we communicated that we would not open it um, regardless of decision, um, or would, would be in June first of twenty twenty-one. So then really, you know, taking that, 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 that point on the, on the calendar, June first, and backing that off to allow some time to um, have another discussion on this, to, to review and um, conclude the as-built condition, um, as well as offer another opportunity to review that intersection out in the field. Um, Jasper and I backed that up and that really brings us to tonight, um, to have that discussion, present that as-built results and review that draft resolution, um, all from an information standpoint tonight. And then a week from tonight, we would do a neighborhood meeting. Felt it'd be worthwhile and powerful to actually meet out at the intersection, have a Q and A session, really visually observe the changes. I think that was one of the things in design and the proposal. We were talking about cutting profiles down two feet and building trails and adding curb and gutter, I think. Um, being able to actually see those improvements, uh, does add some value, does add some power to, to the discussion. And then as Jasper noted, bringing it forward then, um, the next city council meeting, so two weeks from today, um, where we would, we would formally take action on, on that, uh, on that decision to open. And then that would put us then a, a week in advance of that June one date, which for more or less intensive purposes is arbitrary, but um, it's a, it's a date that we communicated we wouldn't do action before. So um, if it doesn't happen physically on that date, I don't think there's anything holding us to it. Um, that's just the earliest we would communicate. Those that are familiar, it's obviously temporary barricaded today. Um, so those, you know, those have to be removed. Some of the barricades, the cities, some of it's the contracts. So we just have to have some coordination there, uh, if the decision is warranted to remove that. So if you don't mind, Jasper. So, you know, uh, that'd be, you know, powerful to capture some of the considerations for design, just to, to, you know, re, re, recover how we got to the point of actually, you know, building the proposed improvements. Um, so as I noted, that existing closure was identified, you know, early in the design, identified early in preliminary design that it was unique. It was something that isn't commonly witnessed where a road is barricaded before another road and a connection's not made. Um, that was really the initial acknowledgement that that is, that is just atypical. Um, as part of that design, the existing condition was studied and it was concluded, I think, from an engineering standard. Um, I don't think, it was concluded from an engineering standard that there was justification for it being closed. Um, there was insufficient site distance, um, where from an engineering standpoint, you would recommend the intersection not be open. Um, so I think we, we were able to conclude and, and understand the existing condition. And it was based on that understanding then that we were able to, you know, move forward with the recommendation for a proposed improvement. Um, the reconstruction of Elmwood, the, the nature of, of the, of the, um, the construction project, the Turnback project, allowed us an opportunity um, to modify that profile and, and achieve the required site distance. Um, and so it was, it was really the nature of the project that allowed us to change that existing condition. One of the things that we presented was a speed study um, on Elmwood and there's been a lot of discussion and, and, and I guess notice that folks, particularly traveling northbound on Elmwood into town, are traveling greater than the posted speed. And we documented that in a speed study from, uh, completed in twenty nineteen, September twenty nineteen. So we thought it was, is important in this proposed design to make sure that we were covering not only the posted speed, but that eighty-fifth percentile. We noticed that the eighty-fifth percentile for northbound was, was forty. So we're achieving the site distance, not only for thirty, but that forty, that kind of as-witness traveled speed as well. And then in the packet is the figures and I have them tonight as well, but um, we went out and completed an as-built survey, um, really supporting that the lowering we communicated was, was achieved, um, and reconfirming that, that, that available site distance that um, we were proposing to achieve and that we felt we could achieve, um, you know, confirming that that, that was, that was able to be, you know, be able to be realized. So if you don't mind, Jasper. So this is just a, a, a quick, you know, snapping out of that speed study, um, just acknowledging that Elmwood has three different speed zones as you're, as you enter the, the city, really starting at that south city limits at one fifteen. Um, there's a fifty mile, fifty-five mile an hour speed, really carrying that urban or that rural speed um, into the, the, the city limit portion there. Near the airport, it, it decreases to a fifty and then that continues into town and actually brings you um, you know, up near the cemetery, where then it turns to a thirty. So south of Caucas, it does turn to a thirty. Um, and then uh, there in that, that top right is that table and that was just an acknowledgement that, that northbound speed, we are, we are witnessing a, a greater than posted speed traveled there. So really just reemphasizing the need to achieve site for greater than a thirty, just to make sure that the intersection is functioning and, and safe for, for what we believe uh, the actual speeds are being traveled. Um, and then just one important thing to note in regards to speed studies and speeds on county roads, um, is, is there is a statute that governs speed limits, uh, that, that establishes your standard thirty mile an hour in urban, fifty-five mile an hour in rural. Um, but then there's, when it, when it's not typical or with exceptions of that, you notice like on Elmwood, there's the fifty. Those are based on an engineering or, or traffic speed study. Um, and so an acknowledgement of, once a road is posted, once those speeds are set as they are in Elmwood, any change to that would require a new speed study. Um, and a piece of just caution, I know, you know, some of the, the, um, you know, previous council members have heard this, but for the new ones. So a speed study is based on a request to Mindot. Mindot is the only authorized agency to do speed studies for county and state highways. Um, and the outcome of that speed study isn't guaranteed. Um, if, if, if the witness speed or that eighty-fifth percentile is determined to be greater than the posted speed, then that's what would come forth from the recommendation. Um, likewise, if, if obviously the witness or the eighty-fifth percentile speed was lower than the posted, um, then that would, that would be recommendation. So there's no guaranteed outcome. I guess that's the caution with the speed study is that, um, they have a potential to go greater or, or, or lower, just depending on the environment and um, truly how that road is functioning. Don't mind Jasper. So one of the, the um, points of consideration when you look at an intersection is there's, there's really two side triangles, two decision, um, decision points that, uh, that, in specifics, a T-intersection like Coventry and Elmwood is. Um, there's two points of decision and they all are based on um, the action of the, of the driver at Coventry. Um, so the, the first is, is a, and this is all a lot of based out of roadway design manuals, um, is the, the left turn from stop. Um, so it'd be the ability for that Coventry vehicle to enter Elmwood and head southbound. Um, so there's a decision, uh, point, there's a side triangle that they need to look to the south and the north. Um, and this graphic is depicting that here. Um, and it's a little difficult to see, but the packet one is clear. Um, there's a, there's a, a thirty mile an hour and a forty mile an hour, just based on the ability to, to see and, and react to that driver on Elmwood. Um, and what this graphic is confirming is based on the proposed design we are achieving it for both the thirty and the forty. Um, and then on this graphic, then we brought in that as-built profile that, that confirmed the lowering of Elmwood, they're showing in the blue, um, that we achieved the design that we proposed, um, with the design as proposed, achieving the site for thirty and forty. So that's the left turn from stop, that'd be to head to southbound. You don't mind, Jasper? So then the other decision point, and I'll, I'll, I'll emphasize, it was, it was the, the vision to the south that was the one that was most critique. That was where the hill um, was noticeably cut down, approximately that two foot back up towards the cemetery. Um, the, this, the, the view to the, to the north or towards, you know, towards town, um, that one is, is, is much less restricted and really didn't require much modification. There was sufficient site always there, um, that the proposed project didn't, um, didn't uh, didn't actually detract from that. So then the other decision point is to make a right turn from stop. So sitting on Coventry and make a right turn and head northbound. Again, you have the view to this, to the south and to the north and this graphic here is, is, uh, is, you know, confirming that the, the site is better here. Um, but again, we're achieving it for that thirty and that forty. And then we have the as-built as well, um, depicted in blue there that, that is achieving that, uh, that proposed, you know, that proposed design as we expected it. If you don't mind, Jasper. So then the last piece then, um, is there some consideration for the action on Coventry itself? Um, there's a decision, uh, there's a recommendation for a decision site triangle for a stopping site distance. So this would be folks traveling on Coventry as they're, as they're traveling westbound to be able to identify and make the stop condition at Coventry. Um, and so we, we studied this and, and confirmed that we had sufficient site, um, almost greater than a hundred feet, if I remember correctly, for the folks on Coventry to identify the stop sign and make the stopping action. Um, one of the pieces that, um, is, is a good recommendation, I think, in this particular instance, is to do a stop ahead sign. Um, so we have that depicted, that is an addition from the packet. There was discussion, we meant to capture that and that has been added formally now. So that sign would be installed, um, recommended to be installed, uh, i- if this decision to move forward is made, um, just to give some advance notice. Um, there's a similar sign there today up near the intersection of Woodcrest that says no outlet. So it functioned very similarly, it'd give, it'd give a, a driver a, a recognition that uh, that there's an action required at the, at the, you know, end of Coventry there on the downhill side. And then we just confirmed, there's a lot of discussion about the profile of Coventry around that five percent. We just, uh, part of the as-built there in blue, we confirm that, um, the field condition really, you know, closely mimicked what we anticipated in design around that five percent. Um, which we, we, you know, we agree from an engineering standpoint, you like your intersections to be as flat as possible, but understanding the real world, that's not always achievable and a five percent for a local road is, is well within acceptable means. Um, and certainly we have steeper areas in, in La Sourd. Um, so just to, I guess, put comment on that. But um, again, very close to what we expected and what we feel is, is obviously within standard. So then, you know, just covering kind of, uh, some of the, you know, the, the overarching positives to opening Coventry, um, you know, in the packet, even acknowledging in the resolution as part of this, this ongoing, you know, study these last few years. Um, opening is supported obviously from fire and police. Um, there's an, an approved response time. Um, there's a good part of this neighborhood, the Park Knolls neighborhood, that um, is, is only served from, from the north, from the north and the west. And so obviously having Coventry connect there, um, there would be some improved response time, um, being able to travel, you know, directly off a county road and getting into that neighborhood. So we, we have support from, from those two agencies. Um, you know, acknowledgement of the, of the opening being supported in, in the transportation plan, um, you know, being able to make that connection and serve that neighborhood. Um, and ma- makes a lot of sense that, that those, that those folks on the south side of that neighborhood are, are able to connect and, and be serviced from, from a local county road, um, as efficiently and conveniently as possible. And um, within that transportation plan, we, we speak to that, that connectivity and the future growth. I mean, we all understand that this portion of town is likely to receive growth. Coventry is one of those that would likely be extended east, um, and probably served from the south. And so having that connection to commerce, to, to the county state of highway, um, would obviously add a lot of value there. Um, and then ultimately, um, understanding that, that, that this is now a county state aid highway, it's a county road and that, La Sourd County then serves as the acting road authority. Um, and in the packet, we had that letter of support that, that is communicating, um, that ultimately this is a city decision based on it being a local road, um, but that La Sourd County supports a, a decision of opening, um, if that's what the, the city chooses to do. So getting that, that, that buy-in from the, from the road authority, or I guess that permission point. So then, um, you know, as Jasper acknowledged, tonight is, is uh, really, I guess, a, a relay of information, um, based on most specifically the as-built survey, um, and then uh, acknowledgement that, that we have that scheduled neighborhood meeting and really just asking council to consider information being presented in order to make an informed decision then, um, based on that, that, that proposed resolution, um, at the upcoming meeting on the twenty-fourth. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, you know, go back on any, on any data or history that may be warranted and um, just. Um, just be, be happy to have any other further discussion.
Thank you, City Administrator, uh, Bean Feng. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bean Feng? I do not at this time.
Mayor Kirby, Member Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Corey, I apologize. I was trying to find it, but I, I recall back to one of our first meetings in regards to this. There was a lot of discussion around it and we. I feel like there was a motion made and accepted that talked about doing another study once. The complete CASA twenty-two was open prior to opening Coventry. And I know we haven't had a full traffic on CASA twenty-two, obviously since. We went into construction because essentially the Lee Sewer part was done and then they rolled basically right into. The outside of town. So we haven't really gauged a real traffic. The real-time traffic out there. Has there been any updates or is there any plans for that?
Yeah, there has. I, I looked back on that as well and, and uh, in preparation for this meeting. So how I recall the, the sequence of events happening is. There's a lot of discussion on speed and I think notably from the speed study, there is a bit of concern that you have a posted speed of thirty. And, and the eighty-fifth percentile is speeding at forty. Also acknowledging that the fifty mile an hour decrease to thirty is, is, is atypical. Typically, you like a, a maximum step of fifteen. So, you know, really warranting a forty-five probably more ideally. Um, so there's a lot of discussion and emphasis on speed. You know, one of the things that, that we did as part of the improvements is we striped the through lanes at eleven feet instead of twelve to try to help. Constrict and, and, and s- slow that, that traffic down as it's entering town. Similarly, we installed the dynamic speed sign. So there's a lot of emphasis on speed. And I do recall discussion on speed. Um, and, and a desire to do a speed study and re- really reemphasizing that we wanted to do that as a local, you know, local city speed study. So we would get an awareness of the speed prior to maybe reaching out to MINDAT. So I think overall, there's an interest. And I think there'd be value in studying the speed and really I think the, the interest on the city's behalf would be to try to lower speed. As you're, you're coming northbound on, on Elmwood. Um, I think the reality of that is it's definitely post-project, so all improvements have to be made. Um, but I, I think in the context that I recalled it is a commitment to do that, but not making Coventry contingent on that. Um, it's an acknowledgement that, um, you know. If the speed study concluded something, you know, less than what's posted out there today, we'd be supportive of it. But if internally the results warranted or showed that, in this case, like we described, the eighty-fifth percentile is forty mile an hours instead of thirty. That's something we probably wouldn't support as a city to move forward with. And we'd leave the posted speeds as are. So kind of a long-winded question. I think the speed study is warranted. I think the, the application is definitely after improvements. But I recall the separation of the two actions, Coventry separate from the speed study. Um, and really supporting that we are able to achieve a design greater than the posted speed. Which is really the worst-case scenario, right? We, we, I think we all agree. We would not increase speed on Elmwood. That wouldn't be our intent. So if Coventry can support site, a site that is greater than the posted speed. Um, then I, I think we, we felt opening Coventry was, was justified in either outcome. Either a status quo or a decrease.
Thank you for that answer. I was just, I just want to make sure we covered all our bases and I wanted to reiterate the conversations that had taken place in the past.
Absolutely.
I guess my only other question, has there been any thought given to? Uh, if you're coming into, into Lee Sewer on CASA twenty-two, is there, how is the traffic gonna? Turn right onto Coventry? Is there gonna be a turn lane there? Is it gonna stay the two lanes?
Yeah, there is. And I, I can speak to that. So the, 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 the reality is there, there will not be a turn lane for, for singular service of Coventry. Um, you know, where there, there isn't a proposed to be a turn lane for any of the other intersections, whether it's caucus, Coventry. Um, Tural, Inter, Regency, they're, they're all uh, intended to function the same. It's an urban thirty mile an hour setting. Um, and, and similarly, the, the thought process was on this project. So. As you're heading south on Elmwood, you know, folks will realize today we're, we're building a center left turn lane. So that's gonna provide some refuge for the left turns down in that commercial district. Um, but we, we purposely are constructing an eight-foot shoulder all along Elmwood or CASA twenty-two, and that carries all the way into the rural too. And so the thought process from the county is, is that shoulder will give some, some refuge and some ability for that right-turning vehicle to get. Out of the through lane or at least have some capacity to, to get over. Um, and so I think we would anticipate a, a similar level of service at Coventry, having that full eight-foot shoulder. So not quite a, a full turn lane, obviously, but acknowledging the wider sho- the wider shoulders will add benefit. Um, and then just, you know, to reiterate that it's a similar treatment at Coventry being proposed as all the other urban streets, uh, you know, intersections, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Otherwise, we can move on. Uh, we're um, asked to give consideration in the information you received tonight. On the opening of Coventry Road and also consider the uh, information you may or may not receive on May seventeenth. Like to see our council there if you can get away for that. And then we'll reexamine this with a vote in our, uh, May twenty-fourth meeting. That'll be Resolution twenty, twenty-one, and we don't have a number on that yet, so. Otherwise, I believe we're ready to move on. Are we ready to move on Jasper? Moving on to regular, regular agenda item seven B, the CASA twenty-two Fahy land dedication. You wanna give us an update on that, Mr. Cugo?
Yeah, Mayor Kirby, Members of City Council. Uh, tonight the intent is just to provide an update about um. Uh, I call it a land transaction that you'll likely see going through the Planning Commission and ultimately City Council over the next uh, probably month or so. Um, just to kind of get everybody up to speed as far as what's going on, the, the intent uh, to, and what we're trying to solve with, with this uh, with this deal. Uh, we do have Corey here as well to, to provide it as, as, there's a lot of survey that needs to happen and that has happened in the area and uh, can, can speak more. Uh, about that. So let's all turn that over to, to Engineer Bean Feng.
Thank you Jasper. So, yeah. Mr. Mayor, Council, um, so if you don't mind Jasper. We had a, we had a, I guess, kind of a unique situation arise here as part of the, the CASA twenty-two project that. Uh, maybe just a direct indicator how much of the city we're touching here with, with uh, this improvement, but. Um, we had a situation on, on Ferry Street here where um, we're probably all familiar with it. It's the daycare. It's the Little Sprouts daycare. Um, so that property, property changed hands in August fourteen, twenty nineteen. Um, and this was about the exact same time where we were strategizing about, you know, do we keep all the improvements literal to twenty-two? Or do we take some of that resource and allocate it to, to roadways like, you know, Ferry Street? Um, and that decision ultimately was made to, to move forward with Ferry Street. We, we all, you know, are aware of that. And so as part of that, that purchase of the property and, and really the function of the daycare, the new owners, which is Ed and Diana Fahy. They approached the city um, for a request of a driveway. That property wasn't served by a driveway apron. Um, there was no connection to Ferry Street. And so they, they requested um, to have a driveway constructor. They submitted a driveway permit. Um, and as part of that, that review of that permit, it came across my desk knowing that we were in active design. Um, and there was a, there was a, I guess, a, a, a conclusion or. Um, you know, basically a determination that it would be ideal to build that driveway as part of the project. We were gonna be redoing curb. We were gonna be taking trees out. Just made a lot of sense to wait one year and do it all together. Um, and at that same time then, there was an identification that we wanted to, to construct a trail along Ferry. We were, we were bringing the trail up Elmwood. We had the existing trail on Kingsway. It's part of that tran- uh, part of the comp plan, the transportation plan. There is acknowledgement of an opportunity to connect those two trails. And so we are planning to construct a trail on the north side of Ferry. Um, one of the challenges with that is there's a sidewalk there today uh, to build the trail, which is needing to be wider in width. We had to secure um, an easement there from the properties along the north side. And so there was an agreement made with the Fahys that we would construct an apron as part of the project. Made a lot of sense. We're building a lot of driveways. Um, in exchange for the ten-foot trail easement, which they were, as Jasper noted, uh, you know, they're, they're, they've been a, a great partner in this project. Um, so everything was, was, you know, supported and felt that to be moving in a positive direction. Last fall, we were, you know, preparing and kind of just getting things marked up to construct this driveway. And uh, and there was a, a situation in the field where we found an issue with the survey. Uh, if you don't mind Jasper. And so what the, what the discovery was is that the property has uh, physical property pins on, on all four corners. So it's got actually found monuments on all four corners. Um, and, and the issue being is that the pins are marked inconsistent to what the deed of the property is as legally described. Um, and what has been found to be the case is that the pinned, the pinned location, the pins themselves are actually five feet east. Of the legal description. Um, and what we found is that the use of the property today is consistent with the pins. So there's a perimeter fence to enclose the daycare backyard. There's some, um, there's some playground equipment. Everything is consistent with the pins. Um, the, the, the challenge is, is that we're obligated to construct the driveway, which the city has partnered on because of the easement exchange. We are obligated to construct it as, as based on the legal description. That is technically the property that they own. And when you review the city code, there's a five-foot um, side yard setback from property line for a driveway. So here lies then the discrepancy. Do you build it per the legal description? Or do you build it per the monumented pins, the use of the property? Um, and then, and, and, and that's the, you know, that, I guess that was ultimately the sc- the discovery and the discrepancy. The request of, of the Fahys, of the property owner, is to build the driveway consistent with the pins. That's. How, kind of how they envisioned the driveway. There's a plan to build a, a garage. Um, ultimately, the driveway is to provide a place for the parents to drop off, to get off of it, off, off of Ferry Street. Right now, all the dropping off is done in the road. So there's a safety, there's a safety value with that. Um, but it's really just this acknowledgement that how they envision the driveway being built, um, based on the pins. Um, i- isn't consistent to, or isn't allowable based on legal description. So if you don't mind Jasper. Kind of give a graphic here of what's uh, I guess, what the challenge is. So. Um, on the, on the left there, this is just to give you a physical representation of what we discovered. So the, the pins are, are, you know, are locatable. We actually found them in survey. Um, so it wasn't any surprise um, that the pins existed. Um, the surprise was just that the legal description didn't match. And so you can see the physical pin is actually, in this case, easterly north is to the bottom side of the screen. Um, is easterly of the legal description. So based on our design, you know, what, what we are, you know, able as a city to, to partner in here. Um, per city code is that we have to be built, built off that legal, which is five feet further, further west than what the Fahys would like. Um, and then on the right-hand side there is a, is a confirmation of the survey. Um, that shows that their fence and, and, and other features are actually outside of that legal description. So just. Confirming the use is based on the property that, you know, the previous owner as well as the Fahys felt they had based on the pins. Um, if you don't mind Jasper. So what is, I guess, what is being um, requested here, what is being proposed as a, as a potential resolution? Um, is, is on the left-hand side, you can see here that um, we actually, we attempted a driveway last fall. Um, to allow them to get that immediate safety benefit here through the winter. Um, but the, the daycare was able to resume there after COVID, so they're operational all winter. Um, so just trying to really add to the value of getting those parents dropping off young kids off the road. This would then be constructed in a permanent situation and that. Um, is really where wanting to give this council update and confirmation of direction, that's where it becomes critical is that. The proposed improvements are planned to be completed as part of Ferry, which is about a month out. So just trying to get this permanent driveway in, in the correct spot and what makes, you know, what makes sense for all parties. Um, so the, the proposal uh, that's, you know, being fro- brought forward tonight is, does it, um, does it, does, you know, is there? Is there, I guess, agreement of support from the council to consider um, a dedication of this five-feet discrepancy? Um, from the American Legion Park to make the Fahys, at least on the east side, um, to make their use consistent. Um, you know, to make their, their, their property consistent with their use. So we would, we would deed the space needed to match the pins. That's the proposal. So if you don't mind Jasper. So the, the, the resolution as I described is the city would deed um, strip that approximately five point eight feet. To allow then a revision to their legal description to match the physical property pins. Um, now, there is an acknowledgement that everything is skewed on this, on this side of, of Ferry Street. It's just. Um, you know, the age of surveys and how they establish these property pins, you know, from section corners. The section corner is actually. Several blocks down on Elmwood. Um, so I think it's just a, 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 I guess, a tale of, of. How accurate survey was and how the, that, that evolution has, has been hap- you know, how the evolution has been with, with the equipment and, and be able to be more precise. Um, the dedication would then at least make them whole for this driveway and it would then allow an opportunity. Um, if, if chosen uh, to, to maybe look at that as you move west then. Um, obviously the Fahys would have this five feet that then they could give that other five feet to the next homeowner and vice versa as you move down the line. That's not being proposed apart of this. We're just looking at this park east side. The dedication is being proposed at no cost. Um, but then it acknowledgement that all of the application, all of the, the cost, the legal, the administrative subdivision. That would be the responsibility of Fahy. So, um, you know, the action is on the city. Um, no, no cost for the land, but then the city's not accruing cost to do this dedication. So it's really on the Fahy's to, to make, to make the process. Um, happen. And then one of the things to always keep in mind with parks is it's really critical to confirm how they were acquired. Um, whether they were, they were deeded as a park or whether it was, it was, you know, conveyed in title. Um, and in this case, uh, uh, we were actually, we were able to confirm that it was, it was conveyed in title. So the city has right um, to, to part, part of strip off here. So we, we were able to confirm that and. Aren't leading down a recommendation here that, that wouldn't be supported by um, how that, that park came to be, came to be and, and was originally dede- uh, dedicated. So if you don't mind Jasper. So really, tonight, um, what this action is, is um, you know, has been kind of a unique situation of how the city came to be. Uh, a partner in all of this, just from a, a request to construct a driveway, but. Um, trying to, trying to do it right, trying to do it by city code. Um, and trying to be mindful of, of the value that the Fahys are hoping to achieve as part of their daycare. Um, you know, I think there is, you know, some step, some support at the staff level. Um, but I really wanted to bring this forward to council and get a consideration if this is something the council. Um, similarly supports, is there acceptance of this? Um, and then we would, we would formally uh, proceed down the, the path of. Um, administrative subdivisions and public hearings and PC meetings and. Um, really kicking this off and, and at that time, the Fahys would start incurring some costs. So we just trying to be sensitive to all parties and. Um, just make sure that, that we had consensus before we move forward, but. Um, this is what's being presented uh, tonight, just to get confirmation of proposal. And then it'd come back again then for formal action. So. Um, a courtesy heads up and just an acceptance of the, of the, I guess, of the situation. So. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or Jasper as well. He's been a part of this whole process, so.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bean Feng. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bean Feng regarding the CASA two Fahy land dedication?
Mayor Kirby, Miss Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Hey Corey, just out of curiosity, did you guys look at all sides of their property or just, just that east side?
We, we did. We looked at all sides and so the, the north and south are, are uh, very consistent as far as dedic- dedicated land and, and pins. They're, they're, they're very, they're very close. I guess I'm, I'm not gonna say anything is, is, is perfectly precise, but they're very close. The, the, it's the east and the west. So, and, and they're both off. You know, the, the east is off as well as the west. Um. We, we feel like the east is, is, you know, more easily solved. The city's a partner on the east side, obviously, where as you move further west. That's all private to private. Um, and really brings in some challenges with young, you know, young mortgages. Both the Fahys and their neighbor have young mortgages and it, it's just a. It's a, it's a can of worms for lack of a better word, but. Um, you know, really the, the city's been brought in because of this driveway and, and that's where. We feel our obligation is and, and ultimately where our partnership will, will remain is just on the east side.
Right. Well, and the only reason I ask is obviously knowing our future. Hopeful plans of Legion Park. I just want to make sure that this wasn't something we were gonna have to reopen here and. Say two years or three years down the road when we decide to do something with Legion Park.
Yeah, it's a great que- it's a great question and with the, the north side are, are, are confirmed to be, to be a lot closer and. Not anticipating uh, any, any uh, you know, where the, where, where we have any major discrepancy of use and, and current, current use and, and legally. and, and current, current use and, and legal use, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Lozey, uh, Mr. Bean Feng, is everybody's property is up by five feet, you're saying then?
It is.
Okay. And what's it, does that put anybody's buildings on the property line or anything like that?
It's close. It's close, Councilmember Lozey. So the, the, the westerly neighbor, the Fahys, they have a detached garage. Um, and, and we looked into it. We, 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 we were cautious how much time we spent here, but, um, it's, it's very close.
Okay. And I guess theoretically, it looks like what, two doors down? That would actually put their garage on the other neighbor's property, wouldn't it? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, we, I never, I, I'll be, I'll be full disclosure. We never looked past the Fahys West property. Um, so we, we, we looked at the full property boundaries from basically the intersection of Elmwood East. So if you're, you're right, Councilmember Lozey, there's, there's a couple more properties. So I think we're three properties down from the city property, the park. We looked at boundaries. We didn't look at physical features within that property. The only property we looked at physical features was Fahys West neighbor. Um, and looking at that garage structure. So that's the only one I feel real comfortable speaking to, that it's, it's close. Um, but one can only presume as you start working your way to the west that, um, things, things get equally close, you know.
It brings up a question, I guess, if you were to give them that extra five feet, six feet, and everybody else said, oh, I want mine too, would that cause an issue with that, if it was that close?
Yeah, I think the, I think that it gets a bit into some gray areas here as far as, you know, what is required when you build garage structures to make sure that things are properly, you know, offset from the property lines. And, uh, so I think it's really kind of a, a tell here of, of the, of the, you know, permanent process, obviously bringing, you know, the survey here originally was, you know, nineteen forty, so just bringing back, you know, historically, how old some of these surveys are and, um, you know, and I, uh, you know, there's, there's some old parts of Lee Sewer here, and so acknowledging that, I, I think it's a, it's a fair point. Um, you know, where we've landed here is, at least on the city side, is we have opportunity to help be a partner in a solution on the east side. But that's really at the end of the day where the city responsibility ends, we feel. Just because we're the park owner, we have the ability to be a partner, but as you move west, Councilmember Lozey, that's a private to private matter and something that, you know, the city, one, can't be a, a partner in solution, and two, doesn't have legal land authority to, to really govern that. So we're, we're, we're striking, I guess, I, I think a fine line of, 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 of balance between something we can help control and, and, uh, you know, and something that, that makes sense for us to be, I guess, involved in. The one closing comment I'll make is by, uh, consideration of this easterly five feet, it does allow for some consideration of correction without somebody losing land, right? If the Fahys were to dedicate that five feet offset to their neighbor without getting the easterly five feet, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, in theory, be decreasing their footprint. Um, so in a way, this, 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 uh, transaction does potentially provide opportunity to correct without, without that end lot, you know, receiving a, a reduction. So for whatever value that's worth as well.
Mayor Kirby, this is, uh, Mahoney, I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Um, in terms of the parking lot design, is that slope on that entrance gonna be reviewed if done permanently? Right now, it's pretty steep.
It is. It will be. Um, there's a couple of things that are causing that to be a challenge. One, we don't have the curb built yet, so the curb will greatly help. And we are modifying, um, the trail along their property, um, that is a steep boulevard today. But being that this is temped in and we didn't have a chance to permanently construct that trail, or we haven't got to the opportunity to construct that trail yet. Um, you're right, Council, uh, Councilmember Mahoney, we, we will be modifying that to get that under a ten percent apron, um, and make that, make that more, more, you know, I guess, you know, traversable for sure. It's just a temporary condition that, that we agree is, is not acceptable for a permanent.
And then just another question, do they have plans to pave that parking lot? Because it, isn't it in our code to have paved parking lots in the city?
It is, and it, it will be. Um, the, the, the proposal was made to allow them to proceed with the gravel through the, through the winter. Um, it was a ask of, of me specifically to have us come through first. I would, I would rather dictate the trail design and the curb design at his best interest for us and then have their driveway match us instead of them going first and us having to match them with just provisions of ADA and things. So it was a, it was an acceptance by staff to allow them to put the gravel in, knowing they had to pave it, but really, uh, wanting for our project to be first. So we had, so we had full control to make our facilities right instead of having to be handcuffed by a private driveway.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Krugman. I'll just simply, uh, give an opinion at this point. More said, a thank you to our city engineer and staff for the homework that was done and the good presentation. And I guess I'll jump a little bit ahead and say, this, uh, opportunity appears to me to be acceptable.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, City Engineer Bean Feng, I want to thank you for your time tonight. Uh, your, uh, information was very enlightening on both subjects. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, hearing your recommendation for the resolution ahead with, uh, Cassat twenty-two and Fahy land dedication.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Crew, you have any, anything you want to add to this subject at all, before we close out?
No, I don't. Um, other than you'll likely see some movement at the planning commission and, uh, and at city council to, to complete this task.
Thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Bean Feng.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor Council.
Comments and reports, um, items of appreciation, council members, this is your opportunity to share any information, any, um, uh, committee meetings you want to share with us. This is your, your time and this is your platform. So let's start tonight with, uh, Councilmember Krugman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick, uh, thank you to Captain Tiki from our police department. He had an excellent article in the newspaper. Hopefully, we can get that out to people who don't get the local newspaper or the so-called local, i.e. the county newspaper. But thanks to him and frankly to all of our staff who've been, uh, giving input to that and to Jasper for, uh, leading that group and, and facilitating that. But again, Captain Tiki did a marvelous job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I may add something, Mayor Kirby, um, we do have intentions of taking the, the editorials that, that we give to the paper and having them just be on our website, um, so that everybody can view them at no cost. Uh, we've heard some, some comments about, you know, it's good information, but I can't see it because I'm not a newspaper subscriber. So we'll have a little section, um, likely in, in notify me where when we post to it, um, people can get notified of it and, and get the same information. So we do have a, a solution, I think, for that.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lozey, you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
Um, the community education approved, uh, sorry, it's been a long year. Can't think of the word now. It's budget. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you. How's that going for you?
That was informational, I guess. Yeah.
Good, good. I was on that committee last year and the year before, so, uh, um, good luck with that. I appreciate your help there. Councilmember Mahoney.
Uh, no, I don't have any reports. The, um, May ARPEC meeting was canceled because we didn't have forum, and, uh, May Planning Commission meeting, um, was also canceled because there were no, there will be no agenda items.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Schleter.
Couple items since our last meeting. The HRA, an offer was made and terms were accepted for a new director. Her name is Joyce. And I'm not positive on the pronunciation of her last name, Batushka. She starts next week. Monica's last day was last week. Then for the Lee Sewer County officials, our last meeting was held at the Justice Center. Sheriff Mason gave a presentation on law enforcement in our next meeting. We don't know the site yet, but Barb Droller-Pline is gonna give a presentation on county broadband in case anyone is interested in that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan.
I got nothing other than tomorrow we have a transit meeting at two thirty, virtually.
Thank you. Good luck with that. Appreciate your work there. Uh, Councilmember Swanberg, anything you want to share tonight?
Nope, nothing at this time.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to take an opportunity to thank, uh, Councilmember, uh, Mahoney with her help on Earth Day. We were at Park Elementary. Arbor Day, we were over at, um, St. Anne's. We dedicated a couple of trees. Um, the weather was exceptional for both days. So thanks again, uh, Ms. Mahoney for your help there. Uh, we had a hospital board meeting last Tuesday. Uh, all went well. Heard from a lot of the executives on finances and things of the hospital. Things are moving ahead despite some of the, uh, challenges of COVID and things. So, uh, things are looking good there. That's all I have tonight. Uh, we'll end with Administrator Krug. If there's any last thoughts you want to share with us?
Yeah, just a couple of touch points. Um, uh, we're looking at potentially, uh, I sent a feeler message out to, to city council about possibly moving into a hybrid in-person meeting, um, starting in, in June. Um, and, and I think I'm hearing some positive things that that'll likely happen. Uh, we're trending toward likely opening back up just normal operations on June first, uh, for our, uh, our city hall. Um, so we're kind of easing our way out of, uh, the COVID nineteen restrictions that we've been under for quite a while. Um, but we'll, we'll communicate those as we, as we start enacting them. Um, uh, we will have those, that, those articles, uh, posted online sometime here in the near future, we hope, um, in, in a text version. So keep an eye out for that. Um, the, the article by, by Captain Tiki really focused on what, what we see a lot of around town as far as nuisance and zoning code violations, especially in the spring when, uh, people are doing spring, spring cleaning and things like that. So, um, kind of important, a good read. So, um, yeah, I think that, that'll be good to get posted, uh, for everybody. Um, we do have a charter commission meeting, uh, on the eighteenth of, of, uh, what month are we in? May. And, uh, and that will be held out at the Legion Park Shelter. So, um, I think the last meeting we had was last summer, and we held it out at the Legion Park Shelter. So we'll be having one of those, uh, and that meeting will get noticed with an agenda. And basically what we're doing is just reviewing, uh, the charter, um, various chapters of the charter and making some recommendations. We have a few that are in the queue, um, that will be considered for a city, at city council in the near future. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Administrator Krug. Let's say, I want to thank everybody for your time tonight. I know it was a long meeting, and, uh, I appreciate everybody's participation. I want to thank everybody else who, uh, contributed to that, to that meeting also. Again, remember, May seventeenth, sixth, was it six thirty? Uh, Jasper?
Correct. Uh, yep, for the Coventry Open House, correct.
If any of you are available and could be a part of that, we'd appreciate it. If you have other things happening, we, we understand. So with that said, we will see everybody in two weeks. Thank you for your time.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See you in two weeks.